Good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council meeting of 13 February 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
President.
Mr. Young.
President.
Mr. Walters.
Mayor.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubig.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Legions? All right, we're on to Item Three, which is announcements and committee reports. I just have one announcement, and it's about the trestle. And I can't emphasize enough, thank you to Strandberg Construction and Culbertson Marine. If you happen to look out there, there's some decking going on right now. So, pretty exciting, and I'm pretty comfortable John's not in the room to tell me otherwise. March, we're going to get that thing open, and we will have enhanced security there as well. But also, thanks to the Parks Foundation and all the great donors that really stepped up, and we were able to get this work done. But we'll let you know when we have an official opening. But we're making some great progress. Other announcements, committee reports, Planning Committee, and I forgot who was Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Planning Committee met at 5:00 PM today with Planner Libby Graje. It was Council members Walters, Cleland McGrath, and myself. And we talked about the shoreline management program and revisions that have been done to that. And we will be integrating our critical areas ordinance into the SMP. It will be embedded within it for ease of access for people that need to access it. It'll all be in one place, essentially, or the parts that are related. And that involves ongoing conversations with the Department of Ecology to make sure this is the way they want the city to go. So, once that is agreed upon, it will come back to City Council. There will be a public comment period on, simply on the changes that are being made, and then City Council will presumably adopt it and send it back to Ecology for final approval. So, we're getting there. Thanks.
All right. Next up is Port City Liaison Committee. Mr. Carter.
Thank you. We met last week, Mr. Young, City Staff, Port Staff, and the Chamber of Commerce. And one of our main topics of discussion was public restrooms, where they're located, and ways that we can kind of staff them to keep them open longer, but also keep them clean and safe, because a lot of them have been getting vandalized lately. And we're just going around the room trying to discuss some ways that we can kind of secure them, kind of keep them safe for the public. Another thing we talked about is the depot pavilion, and we're discussing ideas of putting up a structure around over where the farmer's market meets, because the transit shed, the port facility, is going to be no longer open for events. So, we're trying to come up with a different location to be able to have events for the city. And one of the areas is where the farmer's market meets. And we have a pretty good idea of what it's going to look like, but we're going to be talking to LTAC and trying to come up with the funds to pay for that. And then also, as of right now, ships that need to pump out their waste can travel three miles offshore to pump that out. But as of May, they're not going to be able to do that anymore. So, what the ships are going to have to do is they're going to have to come into land to pump out their waste. And right now, there's only one facility in Washington State that can hold that. So, Anacortes Port is actually looking at adding one of those facilities here. And they're looking at ways to get that funded. There's a state grant that might be able to help out with that.
All right. Thank you. Next up, Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Our committee met last Thursday and interviewed a member of our community who has struggled with housing over the past couple of years. They were living in an RV. A couple of years ago, they were on T Avenue. Unfortunately, her husband died during this struggle due to a pre-existing, I think it was a pre-existing medical condition. Ultimately, she found alternative housing for a short time, but after the loss of her spouse, didn't have enough money to continue to pay for that relatively cheap alternative housing. She'd been to First Step Center in Burlington. She really did not have good reviews of that facility. Ended up living in her car. But thanks to the Family Center, a couple of months ago, she was able to get into their motel voucher program, which is also supplemented by CDPG COVID money as a cold weather shelter. So, now, for the moment, she's got some stable housing, at least temporarily. And most recently, she just got a Section Eight HUD housing voucher after two years of trying to get that voucher. Of course, that voucher's usefulness depends on the availability of housing at the appropriate rental amounts, and it's still slim pickings in Anacortes and Skagit County generally. But it was very worthwhile for us to hear her saga and her experience working through this problem, and some of the bottlenecks that she encountered in seeking service from various agencies. We had interviewed her, I think, more than a year and a half ago as well, at the start of her, or closer to the start of her experience with homelessness. And so, we will promise, have promised to keep in touch and continue to see what her experience is like, and if there are any lessons that we can learn from it. We also continued our work on the Low Income Utility Bill Discount Program. We have a draft ordinance that sets up the structure of the program. Sets that up with automatic enrollment in the program for the Housing Authority and the Family Center for the buildings in which they are providing low-income housing to qualifying people. Automatic enrollment for low-income property tax program enrollees through the county. That's seniors and disabled people who are able to get substantial reduction in their property taxes due to their financial condition. And then, we are also looking at household enrollment for other qualifying households. They would have to apply. And we're looking at the statistics on how many there are, what their income levels are, and what discount values we should propose for each of them. So, there's still some work to do, but we are making good progress on that. Finally, we interviewed members of our street outreach team that are doing work on T Avenue, and I think came away with some insights into that, and what they're doing down there, and what progress they're making, and where they're having trouble. So, we'll have more going forward, especially on the T Avenue bit.
Okay, thanks. Any other announcements or committee reports? Okay, on to Item Four, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on anything that's not on our agenda, which would be the Ordinance 4041. You'll have an opportunity to comment on that if that's where you're here. But I do have two folks signed up, and if you're ready. I have two bills, but the first one, I can't quite read if that's a T or an L, but Mittelich, Bill M., you're up first. And if you could just state your name and where you live, which you just have to tell me if you live in Anacortes. And, oh, we come on over to the microphone over there, because we're, we actually record this stuff. Ms. She will set you up, make sure you're set up.
(Laughter).
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm happy to be here. One of my-
Can you state, sorry, state your name so we can get it for the-
Oh, I'm sorry. Bill Mahalik.
Mahalik, thank you.
You're welcome. I would really appreciate if I could vote for the Fire Department and the Police Department. However, taxes. I don't want to end up on T Avenue, to be honest. And I think the taxes in this state, or Anacortes too, are getting to a point where it's being ridiculous. I don't know what could be done. And the other thing that I have on my mind is that there is an apartment being built on 32nd Street. There is also a house next door to it. He's not, it's a three-story apartment, and there's about 10 feet apart between the two He is not going to get any sunshine until about noon every day. There is also two houses on one lot on I Avenue, and I thought there was ordinances against that, or building, whatever you call them. And there's two houses on 12th Street, just before you hit the roundabout, on the left side, the south side. One of those houses is almost sitting on the alley. And I thought that there had to be a front yard, a backyard, and two side yards, but it doesn't look like it's going to be that way anymore. And I don't know if the doors need to be changed or what, but it's, I don't want Anacortes to start looking like Seattle Sewer. No pun intended. But I love Anacortes. I've been here for over 60 years. I met my beautiful wife here. And I, I just, I love Anacortes. And I want it to look healthy, and I want it to look nice like it used to, but it's starting not to look that way. So, anyhow, that's basically all I have. And thank you again for listening.
Thank you. All right. Bill Perkins is next.
Hi, my name's Bill Perkins. I live in Anacortes. As far as the police and fire, increased taxes to help them get their jobs done, I was wondering if it would be possible to get some charts created that show how many types of calls they've been on over, you know, with a graph chart, not pie charts. Anyhow, show what kind of calls are going on, and over the period of years, to see how much the workload has increased. I think that would be a graphic that would be helpful to say, hey, we need this, or we don't need this. One for the Police Department, one for the Fire, like break-ins, carpels, deaths, fires, medical assistances, just to see the workload and make an informed decision. I would also like to see a chart, same kind of chart, showing the homelessness in town to see if there's a correlation between it, because I don't think that the, whoever runs the refinery out there is busy at night trying to steal catalytic converters. So, I don't know who's stealing the catalytic converters, but I doubt that it's anybody with a real job. So, I kind of see if there's a correlation, because I just drove down T Avenue and the homeless person or whatever, there's a travel trailer there, I believe it was, it was dark, but with a tarp off the back. I mean, this guy has set up his place on the street. But I don't think I can do that in Washington Park, because I have to camp in a campsite. So, if we own Washington Park, the city, and we own T Avenue, why can't we have the same kind of rules and say, you can't camp here, but you can camp there? I mean, please don't tell me we can't set up rules in town, or T Avenue, when we have rules in Washington Park. I mean, the inconsistency just doesn't set well. So, kind of like that. Affordable housing, the definition of affordable housing is, I don't know that it's universal, and where did it come from? But for the projects that we've been, have completed so far in hopes of making more affordable housing, have they actually achieved their goal? Has anybody checked to see how much rents are, or whatever, just so, and you're asking for more money for affordable housing? Well, is it working? I mean, I built a project, does it work? And there's on R and, not R, T and 32nd, I think it's, there's two new, I believe they're townhouses, three-story, five units each, whatever, and they're up for lease now, so I called to ask just out of curiosity. And one unit was $25.50 a month, and the other was $26.50 a month. I used an average of $2,600 a month, and I used 30% as the amount for affordable housing. Don't spend more than 30% of your income. And a $2,600 a month payment for housing equates to about $100,000 a year job, which doesn't sound like affordable, but we've put 10 units where there was one house. They have, most of them have one-car garages, so if you have two people working with two cars and no onsite parking, they can't park on T Avenue. R Avenue? R Avenue. They can't park on R. They can't park on half a T, they can't park in the alley. So, where are they parking? In the neighborhood? Yeah, we've created a parking issue with the neighbors with that kind of zoning. And are our current homelessness, are our current actions reducing the number of homeless? I knew, it's a relative, an older lady, and she had a stray cat one time, and she started feeding it, well, the next thing you know, she's got a whole herd of stray cats. And providing more for stray homeless, I don't know that it will drive homeless people away. And I'd, like the lady you, Mr. Walters, mentioned, I have sympathy for her situation. But as adults, aren't we supposed to take, you know, provide for my own housing and food and clothing and stuff? And if I'm a senior citizen, I've had a long time getting here. Hopefully, I've made some decisions along the way, and if I haven't, I haven't done too well in arranging my life. So, anyhow, I'd like to see the charts so we could say, hey, this is what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will, we have a public safety levy lift lid, I know that's coming on the ballot, and just last week posted information about that on the city's website with about call volumes and some facts from the city. And the Police Department will be releasing, hopefully this week, their annual report for 2022 that will have all the crime statistics in there as well. All right. I don't have anybody else signed up, but anybody else want to testify to or comment to the council during our public comment period? Okay. Moving on to Item Five, which is our consent agenda. Items A and B, council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items A and B.
Mayor Miller, a second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young to approve consent agenda items A and B. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. On to Item Six, Other Business. First up is an Ordinance 4041, adopting new AMC Chapter 2.86 regarding compost procurement. This is a discussion item only, and Ms. Swetnam is going to tee it up for that discussion. And this is open for a public comment as well.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, and members of the council, members of the audience. So, tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce for a first read a draft ordinance 4041 that addresses compost procurement requirements that the state legislature has adopted and that the city now needs to adopt as well. First of all, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Walters, who did a lot of the work on putting this ordinance together, so that is, that's very helpful. So, the background on this ordinance is that Washington State Legislature adopted the Organics Management Law, which amended 20-plus sections of the Revised Code of Washington. And the goal of this package of RCW adjustments is to reduce methane emissions by diverting organics from landfills. So, there are multiple parts of the bill that address things like prevention, collection of organics, processing of organics, and markets for organics, which is sort of what we're going to be talking about tonight. There are lots, there are several sections of the Organics Management Law that don't apply to the city at this point, because the city's either already incorporated organics collection, or there are regulations of businesses that are inapplicable to the city. But what this ordinance that's before council tonight attempts to address are compost procurement ordinance requirements that are in the, that are in the RCW section. And the goal of the requirement is to strengthen markets for additional anticipated compost that's going to be produced with the requirement for additional organics collection. So, the requirement is that cities and counties have to adopt a compost procurement ordinance, and then report the purchases that the city makes or county makes pursuant to that ordinance to the Department of Ecology, so that there can be some review and quantification of these ordinances' ability to meet the goals. So, the general requirement is that when planning government-funded projects or soliciting and reviewing bids for such projects, all state agencies and local governments shall consider whether compost products can be utilized in the project. And then, if compost products can be used, they have to be used unless there are certain exceptions that apply. So, the compost procurement ordinance has to also include a preference for procurement of locally-produced compost products, which is, which is different than how we've done procurement in the past. So, there are some deadlines. The first deadline was January 1st of 2023. You'll note that that has come and gone, and that was when the state legislature wanted jurisdictions to have these ordinances in place. So, the city did not meet that deadline, but that's what we're working on right now. And the requirement was that jurisdictions with greater than 25,000 residents and jurisdictions where curbside organics collection services are provided were required to adopt a CPO. The city of Anacortes already has and has had for some time an organics collection program, so that's why the city is required to adopt this ordinance. Starting at the end of calendar year 2024, and then every subsequent even years, agencies that adopt these ordinances are required to report to Ecology the total tons of organics diverted, the volume of compost that's purchased, and the source of those compost materials. So, just, I just wanted to identify, we're not really talking about these tonight, but just to kind of understand that there are multiple pieces of this, of this suite of changes that, that kind of work together. These are some of the other organics management law requirements. Eventually, businesses will have to arrange for organics collections on a phased-in basis. There will be the creation of the Washington Center for Sustainable Food Management to evaluate whether Washington State goals are being met to reduce food waste. There is a requirement for expanded capacity, both in terms of volume and infrastructure for organics management. There is the requirement of improved product labeling for degradability. And then jurisdictions with solid waste plans that are going to be required to provide organics collection at least 26 weeks a year by 2027. The city's already met that requirement, so. So, back to why we're here tonight. Organics 4041 creates a new chapter in the Anacortes Municipal Code at 2.86, and it requires the use of finished compost products in city projects. It also requires the procurement of finished compost products produced in Skagit County where possible. So, local producers must be certified by a nationally-recognized organization. They must be permitted to provide these products by a Skagit County Health Department, and they must, the products themselves have to meet the guidelines from Department of Ecology and Transportation with respect to quality standards. So, the city is also required in this chapter to provide and perform educational outreach to educate the public on the benefits of composting and using these organic products. And then, and then finally, that the city will meet the requirements of the RCW by reporting to Ecology on the total tons diverted, volume, and cost of compost material and the sources of those materials. So, one, one point, staff reviewed, have kind of talked about the ordinances, and one of the concerns that we had, because this is a new kind of structure, we've really not been allowed to have local preference in our procurements before under state law. So, this is sort of a change in how we do procurement for these types of materials. So, we, we sort of, multiple departments got together over the course of the last couple of weeks and talked about how the city can actually implement the requirements of this ordinance. And some, some kind of common themes came up that we need to do a little bit of work before we can, before we can start implementing these requirements. For example, you know, being required to procure these compost materials will require engineering to amend some of the specs that we have for materials. We'll have to make sure that we incorporate these requirements into city contracts. We'll also have to make sure that we incorporate these requirements into our contracts for subcontractors. We've got to develop, you know, procurement procedures, make sure that we've got the infrastructure set up to be able to comply with the Ecology reporting requirements. And then, the other kind of point that engineering brought up is that we've got a number of bid-ready projects right now that if this ordinance is in effect, you know, next week, it will delay us going out to bid on those projects, because we'll have to rework the contracts and, and update specs. So, our recommendation was that we delay the effectiveness of this ordinance by 90 days to allow staff to get all of the, the structure in place to be able to, to be able to carry out the requirements of the ordinance. And that was really the only change that staff was recommending to the ordinance that was drafted that I believe was modeled after Mount Vernon, or was it Bellingham?
Skagit County.
Skagit County, okay. So, you know, kind of, we've been looking at how other agencies have, you know, have incorporated these compost procurement ordinances to see if we can, you know, get some helpful guidance from what other folks have done. And there's really not been a lot of helpful guidance, at least with respect to the contracting piece of it. So, we're, we're hoping that this 90 days might also allow us to get a little better information about how other agencies are incorporating these requirements. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. If there's additional information that council would like staff to put together, we'll be bringing this back at another council meeting for hopefully adoption.
Okay, thank you. And I attended my first regional solid waste board meeting, I think a couple of weeks ago, and obviously, this was the major, major topic de jour, but sharing the information and the big, the big piece, we already have an organic collection in mind, contracted through waste management. So, just a reminder to council, we do have that, that big piece in place, but we'll work on this. And questions? Oh, this is open for public comment. Anybody want to chat, weigh in on this ordinance piece? Looking here on online? Okay, council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
No, just wanted to comment. I think it's, you know, the intent is good. You know, it's, sometimes it's a process in order to implement good things, and it does take a little bit of reach. And, but I think in this case, I'm, you know, we've always composted. Simply, you know, when my spouse and I got together, that was part of the family heritage. You got to have a bird feeder, and you've got to mulch. And, and we've held to that. But I do think that this is something wonderful, in the sense that it takes just a little bit of an encouragement, but it will enrich the soil. You know, it helps overall all of us. And I think it's a wonderful thing, and, you know, I'm just glad that with a little bit of encouragement and education, I think that we will benefit our planet, we'll benefit production, and land, and land and lawn, regardless of whatever you have, but it'll be a positive thing. And so, you know, I applaud the effort and glad that we're bringing this forward.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Well, I'm glad to see us considering this, one, because of the statutory deadline, I like complying with the statutory deadlines, but two, because it's, it's also pretty important to do the work that the legislature is telling us to do here. The amount of food waste, yard waste, that is in our waste stream that gets packaged up in rail cars when they're available and shipped over to the Roosevelt landfill is, it's pretty sad, especially when there's an alternative. So, my family will take all of our food waste and put it in our yard waste bin. If we didn't have a yard waste bin, we would put it in our neighbor's yard waste bin. If we didn't have a yard waste bin, we would put it in our neighbor's yard waste bin. Because it, especially during the winter, there's plenty of room in the yard waste bins. And a couple of years ago, I submitted some comp plan amendments to try to incentivize the, set goals to incentivize the city to find ways to offer compost collection service at a cheaper rate than what we do now. Because right now, if you get a yard waste bin, you're set for food waste collection as well. But you're paying quite a bit for that 96 gallons of yard waste, and you're not generating anywhere near that much food waste. But the, still the amount in total of food waste that ends up in our solid waste stream is really, it's really excessive when there's an alternative that generates a useful product that we can then buy back, that others can buy back. There is also a lot of emphasis right now on the use of compost for, as a soil amendment and for stormwater management because it is so effective. It's, it's not so much the plants in a rain garden, but the compost that is at the bottom of the rain garden that cleans the soil that rain garden flows through. It cleans the stormwater, rather. The, so there are many benefits of this. And finally, I am glad that the legislature realized that there is a local preference that makes sense, that actually is, is applicable here. I guess because not every city collects organics, and the ones that do have got to have a market for the finished product, and the cities are able to provide some of that, that market. The one change that I would suggest when we bring it back is just for us to do the math and set a date certain for the effective date of the ordinance, so that it's not 90 days post-publication, that kind of thing. It's just so that staff have a, a clear expectation of when this will go into effect. Otherwise, I'm supportive of moving this forward as soon as we can.
Thank you.
I certainly liked what you said about sharing with your neighbors because I hear that a lot when a lot of, a lot of people don't use their whole waste bin and, and talk to their neighbors and, and use it when they, when they do their pruning perhaps. All right, any other things to take back? Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. I just wanted to disclose that I work for Lautenbach Recycling. That's my day job, who has a, an ownership interest in Skagit soils. And Skagit soils is the licensed composting facility in Skagit County where Anacortes green waste ends up. And so I won't be voting on this ordinance when it comes back. I just wanted to add that the number that's estimated of organic waste that ends up in landfills is about 35%. So to keep that out of landfills and turn it into compost and bring it back and use it for stormwater cleaning, erosion control, weed control, soil nutrition, there, of course, there are tons of good reasons to do it as well. So thank you to staff for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Anything else before we bring this back? Okay, thank you very much. And we'll move on to item 6B, contract award for a hydro excavation truck purchase. This is a discussion item with possible action. And, oh, Mr. McDaniel's going to come up. All right. Well, I don't have anything more to say, so you need to come up faster. Because I'm, I'm running out of filler, so. All right, you're on.
Good evening, mayor and council, members of the public. Thank you for having me out this evening. In front of us this evening, we have the procurement of a hydro excavator. This is a tool that we're adding to our fleet as, to improve services and to help maximize our methods of excavating and digging holes, if you will. This particular purchase is in the capital facilities plan because it is an addition to the fleet. We're looking to start the contracting with this contract, We expect, once the contract is executed, it'll probably take about 14 to 16 months to actually receive the vehicle because they have to build it. And then, once that's built, we receive it, then we can put it back into service probably in 2024. 2024, 2025. And with that, I'll take some questions if you have any. I can go in deeper detail and.
I'm sure we'll have some questions, council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
We did look at this in the Public Works Committee, so several of us are already familiar with it. And I, and I've seen one of these run as well. But do you want to tell us more about exactly what it does and why it's, why is it good?
Why is it good? So this piece of machinery, there are many benefits. The industry has switched to this type of excavation for maintenance and operations. This type of excavation uses vacuum and high-pressure water to actually pull the soil away from the utilities that we're digging around and gets us down to those depths of those utilities by using a vacuum and high-pressure water. What that does is that preserves the utilities that are in the grounds, which prevents breakage of other utilities, which also maximizes the amount of time out on a job site. If you can envision a backhoe out in the middle of the, an intersection, digging a hole to go down to look at a individual utility in that intersection, it's a pretty large excavation. We have large asphalt, repair the import and export of those materials. With this particular type of equipment, it actually vacuums down a hole that's less than 12 inches in diameter that just goes straight down. Crew members don't have to enter the trenches to go look at those things, to see those utilities. So all of the benefits with that, that come along with that, from the size of the asphalt patch, to not putting an employee down in the hole, to also reducing the impacts to traffic and those other things, it is just a more efficient way of excavating on those times when you do not need to actually use the big tractor and excavator. They, those have their uses as well and an application. The hydro excavator actually is designed specifically for excavating material. So that's a little brief explanation of a couple of the uses of the equipment.
And even though it has a relatively high cost, half, half a million dollars, with a useful life of 10 years, you're talking $50,000 a year. And it seems, from your description and our discussion of it in Public Works Committee, it seems very easy to see how we get the value of it pretty quickly, not just in all those secondary benefits that you described, but just in straight labor cost.
Yeah, the, the cost of not hitting something that you don't want to hit with your bucket truck. Mayor Miller. Mr. Young.
Yeah, no, to, to the point that you were making, Mayor Miller, you know, oftentimes when we, as, you know, people begin to make decisions about costs, and sometimes we can look at it directly and say, hey, you know, this costs maybe 500, you know, half a million dollars, and the benefit is X. But it's also important to look at what it also prevents because either way, we're still paying those costs for broken things that we have to repair in the course of doing business. Those are costs associated with the work that we do. And so when we start looking at, is this a value, of value to the city and the work we do, we have to do, as the mayor was pointing out, look at those, you know, auxiliary costs that are associated with it. And it's, it's important. You know, it's, you know, oftentimes when I, you know, look at the value of something, I look at not only the value of what happens there, but what no longer can happen there and the benefit or the detriment to the people that are affected by it no longer being there. Those are costs as well. So, yeah, no, I think this is a good thing. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Motion? Mr. Young.
I move that the city council authorized the mayor to sign the contract, with Owen Equipment Company in the amount of $555,229.82 for the hydro excavation truck purchase.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr., Ms. Moulton to authorize me to sign the contract as presented. Mr. Franciac, could you take the vote, please? Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick? Mayor Miller? Uh, Mr. Walters.
I noted that she dropped off. Okay, there may have been a power outage.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Okay, we are on to item 6C, another business, Resolution 3110, waiving the state competitive bidding requirements for the purchase of a used Bowmag asphalt roller.
I think I pronounced that correctly, and it's fun to say.
Yes, good, good evening, mayor, council, Henry Hatch, Public Works. I always keep the easy and good stuff for myself. The complicated gets to Mr. McDaniel. Now, we have a great operation group, and they do much road work every year. Currently, we have a very small roller. And in the past, we have constantly been renting a bigger roller at a high cost, but when we need them, it may not always be available. So we looked around, and I've talked to our operation people. Everybody has, this is their number-one priority. Knowing the fact that different from the equipment that Mr. McDaniel just made a presentation on, to be used all year, this is only used throughout the summertime paving season. So we can do without buying a brand-new one at around $55,000. We found a very good one, a used one, about $30,000. And the condition, they're going to deliver it to us. We can try it, see it, drive it. If we like it, we buy it. If we don't like it, there are no obligations. I think it's a pretty good deal for about half the price.
Mayor. Uh, Mr. Walters, then Mr. Young.
Kudos to our contracting staff, or maybe, maybe your staff, for putting together this resolution, including the price, the fact that we're authorizing the purchase of one, not an unlimited number of asphalt rollers. I think that all of that came together pretty well. I do recall that it was only a couple of years ago, I think, that we purchased the smaller roller that we now find to be insufficient. So as a general matter, I am very supportive, and I think most of my colleagues are as well, of buying the right tool for the job, even if it costs more. And I'm glad that we found a discounted one here. But just as a general matter, let's not buy too small of one if that doesn't work. And I certainly understand there was no staff that were currently in the room who bought the last one. My only question is this. From what account are we paying for it? Because I believe that we bought the last one out of our pavement management funds, which includes our TBD tax. What's our source this time?
Yes, this is actually, it's been put in our 23 budget out of, I think, out of equipment purchase. I haven't looked at that, to be honest. But, or either that or road supplies, that is, that account, that one.
Do we know? What?
I cannot give you the, the number right now, but I'll be happy to let you know tomorrow.
Definitely get back to you on that one.
Yeah.
And this doesn't actually make the purchase, it just authorizes it, so maybe there's still time to figure that out.
That's, that's correct.
I, I am somewhat agnostic on what the source of the funds is, but arguably, it could be Fund 104 for pavement management. Maybe that would be a legitimate source of funds for this.
Yes, it certainly could be because pavement management is really to just that, including equipment and supplies. If I may go back to the smaller roller that we purchased a couple of years ago, that is still very useful for us for a smaller project sidewalks. This is for bigger projects. So that was not at.
Would we use it for cement sidewalks?
We can, but mostly this is for asphalt, really.
Uh huh.
He, he said for cement sidewalks. And Mr. Young?
Thank you. You know, really, what I really like, sitting as city councilman, you know, part of my role and charge is fiscal, a fiduciary, fiduciary of the public funds. You know, giving my best to make sure that the city is run efficiently, that any issues are addressed, and that at the end of the day, you know, our city continues to prosper and move forward as best as it can. What I love about this is that I always love when staff comes forward and shows us not only how they can save money, but also, you know, in a big way, by doing this project ourselves, it saves us a tremendous amount of money on things that we would have to address at a higher cost, even if, you know, we were hiring out or hiring out to anyone else. And so at the end of the day, this really, I think, is a great cost savings. And I hope that the, the public makes note of the various ways that various departments bring forward the staff, and the staff works hard to save money, first of all. But also, it develops the chops, if you would, inside the department to do other things that we need done. It's a wonderful savings for, for us as a city, and I'm very much appreciative of it. And I just thought that it would be important to laud that effect because it's a wonderful thing for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
I move that Resolution 3110 be approved, waiving the state competitive bidding requirements for the purchase of one used 2017 Bowmag BW-120SL5 asphalt roller. I don't think I need to read the serial number. And authorizes sole-source purchasing from Sunz Ray Machinery.
Second. Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Carter to approve Resolution 3110, waiving state competitive bidding requirements for the purchase of the Bowmag asphalt roller as presented. Miss, any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac?
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Being no further business before the council, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.